Good evening, everybody. This is a meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Bolton. It's Thursday, July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four. And first up on our agenda is the continuation of a public hearing on the petition of National Grid to install one solely owned pole on South Bolton Road, beginning at a point approximately zero feet west of the center line of the intersection of Spectacle Hill Road and continuing approximately three hundred feet in a west direction. Do we have, uh, do we need a motion to open the public hearing, Jenny?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, roll call Stan.
Yes.
Kate.
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Before we get into everything, I did just wanna share with folks that may be joining the meeting or viewing at home is, unfortunately, we are not joined this evening by our town administrator, Marie Sobolvaro. She experienced an unexpected death in the family, and we really wanted to support her in this difficult time and insisted that she not be here at this meeting. So just wanted folks to understand that, and we're all sending our best wishes to her and her family. So with that, I know that we got some information, additional information related to this petition for a pole. We got some pictures, and is there somebody here from National Grid who's available to speak on this request?
Hey, how you doing? This is Colton from National Grid, back again.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to be here.
So could you just briefly explain what it was that you were able to provide since the last, uh, since the last meeting?
Yeah, so just to go over this, uh, this is a what's called the stub pole. This is going across the street from an existing pole to provide lateral support for it, so that it stays essentially up in the air. I I'm doing this petition, but I'm not the designer on this. The designer provided that information to the highway department to review the location. I think there was concerns. We got snow plowing and I think that was it. So Javier Hov sent those files over for review.
I see that we also have our tree warden, Mr. Case, this evening. If you wouldn't mind just saying a little bit about your opportunity to review the latest information.
Sure. So about two weeks ago, they did finally stake the location or the proposed location of the pole. It seems when they stake a, when they stake a location, the pole can be within feet of the actual stake. And my concern is that it doesn't get any closer to the roadway than where it's staked. And if it doesn't get any closer than the roadway, I am fine with the stake location. They have, because the pole purpose, like the gentleman mentioned, is to create a guide pole for, and remove a guy wire from a tree. They're gonna have to finagle the pole in place because the canopy of the tree. And that was my, one of my concerns when it was not staked is if it was gonna be the right or the left side of the tree, and the lot, least impact is the left side of the tree, which they did stake it as. Like I said, if the pole is going in the exact stake location and no closer to the roadway, I don't have any problem with it whatsoever.
Okay, thank you for that. Any questions or comments from the other members of the board?
No, I don't. I'm I'm fine with it.
Just a reminder that I've recused myself from this because I'm a direct abbotter.
Thank you for that reminder, Kate. Okay, so Stan, you can help me out here because I don't think I've ever handled the actual formal approval of one of these before, but I'm assuming we need a motion to approve the requested petition. Is that right?
Yes. Uh, well, I guess before that, does anyone have any comments from the audience?
I'm not seeing any.
Okay.
Jenny, is there anything I'm missing?
We were in Millet.
There we go. Sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Millet.
Thank you. Just a reminder, I'm the property owner for the lot that it's involving forty-five Wheeler Road. And the state's location, I'll admit, is is more or more amenable to than we were previously thinking. It was gonna interfere with the use of that that backside part of our property. It is off to the side, not on the direct hill, which is a good thing. I just wanna see if I could clarify, because initially I saw a petition that was saying the pole was moving across the street. I guess the original plan was that they were moving the pole, but there was an incorrect pole number. And so now I just wanna clarify, are there two instances of National Grid doing projects on South Home Road, or is it just this one and it's the scope of it has changed to where it's just a support pole now across the street, and it's just the one thing that's going on?
Yeah, as far as I know, this is, it's just a support pole across the street. There's nothing else, no other poles going on that side of the road. At least for this petition. I I don't think there's anything else, but this, as far as this petition goes, this is just for that one pole. It's a stub pole. It's gonna be, I believe, just thirty to thirty-five feet tall, reduced height. And it's not going to have electrical infrastructure on it. It's just to support the pole sixty-five across the street, the existing pole. And yeah, that's, that's, that's the purpose of this one.
If it, if it's just the one existing petition, it looks like it just changed, you know, somewhat substantially before. I was describing like an upgraded service for the area to support the Mallard Land Development. And then, you know, moving the existing pole across the street, but if that's changed from one petition submission to another, and we're just down to this one, if this is the final is what I was trying to confirm, I guess.
I can't speak for National Grid, but I can speak on the, uh, the condition of the poles in that section. And with the new subdivision, I can't believe that they're not gonna be doing some improvements to the existing pole line. But that would all take place, excuse me, that would all take place within the existing pole line, simply replacing poles and stuff like that. The main objective of this whole project, this petition was to remove the guy wire out of a tree. And so they can support that existing pole number sixty-five. Very rarely do they ever like reroute wires if in an existing pole line. Sometimes they will put poles in between poles to shorten the spans, but that would all be a public, another public hearing. I don't, the spans there are relatively short, but there is one section that is a little bit longer that may require an additional pole when they, I I can't believe they're not gonna upgrade to feed that new subdivision.
Yeah, I believe we are.
Yeah.
Okay. And then a question, one remaining question for Mr. Marshall and Mr. Case. The the two trees that are right next to where the stake is, are we gonna be able to preserve those trees? One is a very mature old growth oak tree that we wouldn't want to have substantially cut. And then there's also a nice beech tree there, which, you know, the beech trees are being wiped out in our town, and that's one of the remaining, you know, kind of mid age growth ones that's there. I'm hoping we can install a pole without having to cut those.
Yeah, that would be a whole separate thing. Would have to have tree hearings for. That was never broached in this petition. They might have to do some light pruning on that white oak, but where the pole location is now, and I have set poles myself, I don't think that there's a problem. I think that pole it's a shorter height pole can go in with no problem.
Okay. All right. Thank you for answering those. No further.
Okay, thank you very much.
So shall I make a motion?
I believe in the past we've closed the hearing prior to the vote.
Yes. I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, and I'll second that. And I'll just make sure, Kate, that we get your abstention on the record. So roll call, Kate. Stan.
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the petition of National Grid to install one solely owned pole on South Bolton Road, beginning at a point approximately zero feet west of the center line in the intersection of Spectacle Hill Road, and continuing approximately three hundred feet in a west direction. Install one solely owned pole number sixty-five dash eighty-four, approximately three hundred feet west of the intersection of Spectacle Hill Road. This pole location is a new location and directly across from existing pole number sixty-five on South Bolton Road in the Town of Bolton, adjacent to and west of five Spectacle Hill Road.
And I will second that motion. And we'll do a roll call, Kate.
Of staying.
Stan.
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. All right. Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Thank you, Mr. Case.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. Okay, um, as we tee up the next agenda item, I'm gonna apologize for having to go off camera for like a minute while I relocate because there's something crazy going on in this building, but I will be listening in. So with that, if I could just ask Chief Hamburger to participate in the announcement of the promotion of Sergeant Kimberly Barry to the position of lieutenant.
Absolutely. Thanks. Good evening, all. Thank you very much for having us. I wanted to, it's my pleasure to announce the pending promotion of Sergeant Kim Barry. Just to give you a little bit of background on what the process entails, back in May, we posted an internal notice within the department for any eligible officers to apply for the pending backfilling of the lieutenant's position. We recently vacated by myself. Sergeant Barry applied, and she was actually our only applicant at the time, but so my, my philosophy has always been, let's make sure that any applicant that applies has to go through the exact same vetting process, whether it was one applicant or a hundred applicants. So I'm very pleased to announce that she did extremely well in the, uh, the assessment. The assessment, we contracted through an outside firm that we've used before for promotional processes, Commonwealth Police Services. It consisted of a fairly rigorous written exam and also an oral board. And the written exam was the specifics of Massachusetts General Laws. And the oral board was conducted by a current Massachusetts chief. And she passed with a written score of ninety on the test and a ninety-six on the panel with an cumulative score of ninety-five point five. To give a little bit of her background, she's been with our department for twenty-seven years. She started off as a dispatcher. She has worked her way up through as a patrol officer. She has been a sergeant now for approximately eleven years. She is our senior sergeant with the department. She has been a detective. She's been a court officer. She's been a sexual assault investigator. She's been a rad instructor in the past, so she's done a little bit of everything. And as the senior sergeant, she has been instrumental in mentoring and providing field training for our new officers and our new sergeants that we've hired from outside. So all that said, I'm very pleased to introduce for the first time or possibly reintroduce Sergeant Sergeant Barry, who we are looking at a September timeframe. My tentative plan is for September first for her to step into the role of lieutenant, and she has been working with me on a regular basis as I've thrown a whole lot of stuff at her all at once.
That's terrific. Thank you, Chief Hamburger, for that introduction. And congratulations to soon-to-be Lieutenant Barry. And, you know, thank you so much for all your service. Do you have anything you'd like to share with the community?
I do, yes. Thank you. I just wanna thank the Select Board. I'd like to thank the Town of Bolton for the opportunity to continue to serve the wonderful town in a little bit different of a capacity. As the chief said, I've been a part of the town for many years. I've worn a lot of hats there. I've met a lot of great people, and I look forward to just continue that relationship with the town. It's certainly a great community, and I'm very excited to take on the new role and assist the town and the chief with whatever he may need.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
Well, Kimberly, congratulations. You and I have worked together a long time in this town. We've been through a lot, and I couldn't be happier. We will, we have a great upcoming lieutenant coming into the, into the department. Congratulations. It's, 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 I continue, it'll be a pleasure to continue to work with you.
Thank you very much. It's very much appreciated.
And congratulations from me as well. I'm happy to see women rising through the ranks. I think that's fabulous for the town all around.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks again. Congratulations. We're so grateful for your service to the town, both of you.
Thank you as well.
Thank you much.
Thank you very much. It's been our pleasure.
And congratulations to you, Luke, for your pinning this past week as chief. We look forward to to working with you as well. Congratulations to you both.
Thank you very much. Thank you for allowing us to serve. We, uh, we enjoy it.
Thank you. Have a good evening, folks.
You as well. Take care.
Good night.
Thank you.
Night. Okay. Thanks for bearing with me through that little technical issue, but I think we're on track. The next item on our agenda is to consider a request from Avalon Consulting Group on behalf of the International Beverage Service Company LLC for the change of manager to Thomas A. Barnard for the existing annual all alcoholic beverages club license at one fifty-nine Ballville Road. I believe that we were going to have somebody speaking about this request is that, I'm looking at my window now.
Kelly Cardoza. Hi, Kelly. How are you?
Hi, Stan. How are you?
Good to see you again.
Thank you. So for the record, my name is Kelly Cardoza. I'm with Avalon Consulting, and I'm here tonight for the applicant. We are requesting a change in manager to Mr. Barnard, who is with us tonight. And he's well qualified for this position. He has more than thirty years' experience as a club manager. And we are very pleased to welcome him to the International and to Bolton.
Great. Welcome, Tom. Nice. It is a pleasure to meet you.
Yeah, nice to meet you. Any questions from the board?
I, Tom, I think you're, you're on mute, or we can't hear you. Not yet. Nope.
And while, while he's working on his sound, I would love to confirm if it is Barnard or Bernard.
I have his, since you can't hear him, I have his passport in front of me, and it's B-A-R-N-A-R-D. So my guess is that someone typed that on his computer and messed it up. That's just my guess.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, it's Thomas Arthur Barnard.
Okay.
Pleasure. Now, do we, do we need to do a vote on this, or I don't?
I think we do, but are there any other questions or comments?
Ask a question, since this is my first time going through this. What are the standards that we apply here? Is there minimum requirements that somebody has to meet in order to serve as manager, or what are we looking for?
Most of that.
We're not necessarily looking for anything. It's, it's, it's the international who chooses who the the club manager is.
So it's a, it's a formality for us to approve it. Is that essentially it?
And it's the A, the ABCC has its own vetting process, so what you are doing is approving the application, and then I'll submit it to the ABCC, and the ABCC will issue the license, or will give it back to us to issue the license.
And if I could just add a comment, as you're serving here as the local licensing authority, and what the ABCC does is do an investigation and, and vet the applicant. There's a query process. And if for some reason he was found not to be suitable, which is not the our expectation here, that would be reported back to the town before a license was issued.
Thank you. I appreciate the background.
Okay, so I do think we probably should vote to approve the request so that we can submit that to the ABCC.
Yep. I'll make, I'll make a, a motion to approve the request from Avalon Consulting Group on behalf of the International Beverage Service Company LLC for the change of manager to Thomas A. Bernard for the existing annual all alcoholic beverage club license at one fifty-nine Ballville Road.
Second.
Okay, great. All in favor? Roll call, Kate?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you both.
Thank you, and we appreciate your time.
Thanks, Kelly. Good seeing you again.
You too. Usually I'm in my office, so you get to see my house now. I didn't realize I hadn't fixed my laptop, but have a good evening, all.
Thanks. Bye-bye now.
Bye.
Thank you.
And there will be one document for signing in the folder over the weekend, and then I'll submit the application on Monday.
Great. Here, Jenny.
Thanks, Jay.
Okay, so Jenny and I chatted ahead of time, obviously recognizing that our town administrator herself is not here to give the report. I do think there's at least some information that Jenny's prepared to kind of share with us with reference to the two items, the two bulleted items under this agenda section.
Yep. And first, I didn't tell you I was going to do this, but I just wanna take, take a moment under the town administrator report to report that I'm hearing nothing but positivity regarding Marie's first couple of weeks in office. She's been making a really great effort to get to know the staff. She's been reaching out to other departments. I know she's taken a tour of the Council on Aging and the DPW. She attended the pinning ceremony for Chief Hamburger. She's been, we've been coordinating a visit to the library when the trustees could take her around, which I think will be happening next week. She's had her first town hall staff meeting. I could go on, but her experience is really evident, and we're really excited just to have her here. And she was very distraught that she couldn't be here. I wanted to add that, too. But she has two items on her report. The first is the United Cultivation Retail Cannabis License Update. And the impetus for having this on her report was an email that we got from Mike Spangler back on June twenty-seventh. That the post-provisional license inspection happened on, on June twenty-sixth, and all matters related to the inspection were complete, and they were in the queue for the final license approval. And the next scheduled Cannabis Commission meeting was today. Marie then hungrily investigated to make sure that they were on that agenda and learned, unfortunately, that they were not. The Cannabis Commission meets once monthly. Marie then reached out to Representative Hogan's office, who is going to be advocating to have them on the agenda for the August eleventh meeting, which is the next time that they're meeting.
Okay, just, just to close the loop, Jenny, there's nothing at this point that is needed from the board. This is just an update.
Exactly. And then the second bullet was the policy review and code of conduct policy update, and I know that Marie has met with or at least spoken to Kate on those items, so I thought I would turn it over to you, Kate. I hope that's okay?
Yep, no, that's fine. I spoke with her earlier this week. I had given her a heads up before she started when I introduced myself that this would be on her plate when, when she arrived in Bolton. We talked about it earlier this week. She understands, I think, what the board is looking for. We're looking for her to spearhead and you know, this as sort of a mid to long range project over the next several months, and we're looking for her to give us ideas and direction and suggestions, and we're looking for her to do the legwork where appropriate, to check in with different departments about policies. And I think she, she understands. She's familiar with the policies from Harvard, and I think she'll, she'll hit the ground running on this. So I told her that I thought what the board would wanna hear first is her layout of plan for, for how she's gonna attack this over the next several months.
Well, thank you for doing that, Kate, and I think that's exactly right, having, you know, hearing the layout of the plan for the process for getting this all done is great. Thanks again for taking time to do that.
Yep, no problem.
Stan, do you have any questions or anything about that?
No, no, I'm fine. I'm fine with that. I did speak with, with, with Marie about something related to that, but I'll, I'll mention it under future agenda items when we get that.
Okay, great.
One other thing I just wanted to note was Marie was planning to have a coffee with the town administrator on Friday. We did reschedule that for next Friday, so I would just like to invite the public to drop by the Bolton Bean next Friday, the nineteenth, between eight-thirty and nine-thirty to meet Marie and ask any questions. Or just say hi.
Thank you for mentioning that, Jenny. Okay, so then I think we can just turn to Select Board business for the remainder of our agenda. First up, any public service announcements?
Yeah, I have a couple. One, which I do periodically, is if, if residents are bringing bottles and cans to the transfer station, if they are deposit bottles, it's greatly appreciated if you separate those out and not throw them in the recycle bins, but, but drop them off at the Boy Scout shed, which is at the top of the hill, the little red shed. That is a major source of revenue for the Boy Scouts in the Town of Bolton. People are doing a great job. I see lots of soda cans and beer cans and beer bottles and recyclables, but if you could separate them out and put them in for the Boy Scouts, that would be greatly appreciated. The other item is just a reminder. Bolton has switched to using orange and green bags, which you need to purchase rather than using stickers. So the only bags that should be going into the trash are either a town-supplied and purchased orange or green bag, not black bags, not white bags, not clear bags, but just the, the town-approved and purchable, purchable, purchable bags. Having gotten a little tongue tied, but yes, if you could just do that, that would be great. We've got pretty good compliance, actually very good compliance, but there are a few folks that perhaps may not have heard the news. So if you could do that, that'd be great. That's all I have right now.
May, may I piggyback on that as well? With the senior, with the seniors coming in to pick up their senior allotments of bags for seniors particularly choosing the smaller bags, they get sixteen rolls of bags, and it's a lot to carry. And we don't have, we've been trying to bring in shopping bags to, to give to people, but we can't keep them on the shelf, so bring a tote bag with you if you come in to pick up your allotment. It would help us out a lot.
Thank you for that. Any, anything from you, Kate?
I do have one, just based on my personal experience. Yesterday, when I got home from work, I had a juvenile bear that had opened up my galvanized trash can for my chicken food. So just a reminder to everybody that there are bears out there right now. Bring in your bird feeders. Keep an eye on your kids and your pets, assuming that you like them.
Nice one. Great. I have no, nothing to add. No bear encounters on my end. All right, future agenda items. Why don't we start with you, Stan, since you mentioned you have at least one?
Yeah, dovetailing on the policies review, in talking with Marie and our, our town treasurer this, this past week or two, we don't have a real policy on the specific uses or how to use viewpoint. Viewpoint is used in Town of Bolton for lots of different things. And one is recording monies that come into the town, and I think would behoove us to have Marie take a look at and work with our treasurer to come up with a policy on the, the, the how-to-use viewpoint for specific items, and because I think it's very important in terms of tracking, so that's something that I think would be would be beneficial for Marie to work on as a new policy, as opposed to give the, the, the review of the existing policies and get them up to, up to speed.
Stan, that's a, that's a great idea. Can I just ask a question? So are you hoping that we can sort of front-load that and get that on an agenda in August? Like, I don't know if you spoke with Marie about timing for how long?
No, I, I, I was gonna speak with her today about it earlier, but obviously she's not in. I think probably we should just have something where we discuss it at a very high level at a, at a next meeting. I think it's probably Marie needs to go and speak with the, the town accountant and treasurer on, you know, what they'd like to see in terms of, of various aspects of how viewpoints should be used. And then ask Marie to come back with, with some with some related to that.
Okay, so we can include that on the agenda for the twenty-second of August?
Yep.
Anything else from you, Stan?
Nope, I'm good.
Kate?
I don't know if it should be an agenda item, but I know that periodically the Select Board does goal-setting for the town administrator, and I don't know what the plan or the process would be for when to do that with Marie, whether it's appropriate to give her a few months to adjust before we do that.
Typically, what we've done in the past is we, obviously, we should give Marie a little bit of time, but it's get her, allow her to give her perspective of what she sees as goals for the town, and we certainly can chime in on that and kind of hash that out over a few sessions.
So probably it makes sense to do something similar where we include it so that we have the ability to discuss at a high level at our next meeting, basically lay out the plan for the plan.
Right.
Does that work?
That sounds good to me.
Okay, great. And then Jenny, was there anything on Marie's behalf that we should be aware of for potential future agenda items?
Yes, where is my note?
So I had a note about we could, we should be able to have a discussion of the potential need for an easement near the Rotary.
Exactly. At the time that the Rotary was being designed, we did not think that there would be need for any easements, but there may be, where is my note? There may be a requirement for an 800-square-foot easement from a butter to accommodate a pedestrian walkway, and Randy Haglund is working on that, and we'll have more on that in the future.
Okay.
And then one other note that I just wrote myself is, and it may be obvious, we need to set a fall schedule because August 22 is the last meeting that we have scheduled at this point. So I will work with Marie to come up to draft a potential schedule and send it around, and we can finalize those dates hopefully at the next meeting.
Okay, that's a great idea. Thank you for remembering that. Okay, so then the next thing is vote to approve additional $100 longevity pay for employees with over 20 years of service to the Town of Bolton. For Kate, this is something that we do on an annual basis, so I didn't know. Typically, what we do is we actually read out loud so that the public is aware of these excellent years of service, but before I do that, did you have any questions?
I do not.
Okay, well, then, for the record, according to the Personal Bylaw and the Police Union Contract, any employee who has accumulated over 20 years of service is eligible to receive upon the approval of the Select Board an additional $100 in longevity pay for that service. Throughout fiscal year 2024, seven employees will meet this criteria. So Warren Nelson, 31 years of service, Kelly Collins, 26 years of service, Lorraine Kenny, 26 years of service, Nate Berry, 24 years of service, Kimberly Barry, 23 years of service, and Scott Duenell's, 22 years of service. So thank you to all of those folks for their years of service, and I think we just need a motion to approve longevity pay for those folks.
Make a motion, we approve longevity pay to the individuals just referenced.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Kate?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well, and again, thank you to those long-term employees of the Town of Bolton. All right, now we have a vote on end-of-year transfers for fiscal year 2024. Jenny, if you wouldn't mind, would you be able to just share that one-pager for everyone's benefit? And I just wanted to note, you know, this is standard year-end practice that we do around this time. It requires the approval of both the Select Board and the Advisory Committee. And we actually, we only have a small handful tonight, so. And so basically, what you can see here is the requested transfer, the account where the transfer is being requested from, and then the account where the transfer would go to, and the description of the purpose on the right-hand side.
I just noticed the Board of Select minutes referenced, so if I'm able to edit this document, I will try my best. I will edit it before I leave it out for signing. I only have it in PDF form, but I should be able to take care of that.
Questions from the board?
No, no questions.
Okay, so just cross all of our Ts and dot all of our Is. I will just read out the amounts and the account name from and to. So I would entertain a motion to approve the following transfers. $30,000 from Compensation Reserve to FIRE slash EMS wages, $25,723.47 from police wages to FIRE slash EMS wages, $100,000 from a 580 Main Street Inspections account to Snow and Ice, $127,807.16 from police wages to Snow and Ice, and $10,000 from police wages to Public Safety Electric. Is there a motion?
I actually think you said $127,000 for the police wages to Snow and Ice, so I'll just.
So $123,807.16 from police wages to Snow and Ice. So is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the FY '24 end-of-year transfers as stated.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Kate?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thanks for sharing, Jenny. Okay, in everybody's packets, we got a copy of the lease between the Bolton Senior Housing Corporation and the Town of Bolton. Jenny, do you want to just provide any additional context to get folks up to speed on the conversations that town administrator had with Lisa Dion?
Yep, I just wanted to mention that Marie reached out to Lisa and learned that the Council on, the parameters of the lease itself were acceptable to Lisa. They have a very good working relationship. The lease is a 5% increase year-on-year, which is fairly typical for how it has gone in past years, and she felt comfortable presenting this lease for signing.
Questions?
I'm fine with it.
I just have one comment, which is a revision to 16.10, which is notice to the tenant, still refers to Don Low. We might want to change that. Or we might want to take out the name entirely and just have it sent to town administrator, so we don't have to constantly, hopefully not constantly, but we don't need to worry about updating it when we have changes in personnel.
Yeah.
Nice, nice catch. Okay, so without any other questions, is there a motion to execute the lease between the Bolton Senior Housing Corporation and the Town of Bolton?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, roll call. Kate?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. All right, and then we, Jenny, just while I'm teeing up this next one, I think when we get to minutes, I want you to be able to share a screen if that's okay, but now I'd like to entertain a motion to approve bills slash payroll warrants, W-24-25 and W-24-25A.
The last agenda that I have has an appointment of Samantha Bosale. Was that taken off?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. I'm looking at the, I'm so sorry. I'm looking at the outdated version. Thank you, Stan. Sorry, since I don't have that document up right now, Jenny, could you just? Or Stan, could you just read out that?
Sure. The next item is appointment of Samantha Bosale to the open seat on the Conservation Commission. And my understanding is that this position was advertised, so they got through the process.
Yep. I do see that it looks like there's a Sam Bosale who has joined the meeting, and so I just didn't know if she wanted an opportunity to introduce herself or say anything, and if not, that's fine, too. Hi.
Sure. Hi, I'm Sam Bosale or Samantha Bosale. I'm interested in joining the Conservation Commission. I've got a little bit of experience with agriculture and some other related activities, and sorry about the dog in the background, but it's nice to meet all of you.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for stepping up and wanting to volunteer and serve the town. That's really, really great, so thank you.
Thank you.
Been forward to it. Thank you.
Okay, so as Stan mentioned, I believe Jenny had confirmed also this was appropriately advertised, so I don't think there are any technical hurdles to prevent us from approving this appointment. So is there a motion to approve the appointment of Sam Bosale to the?
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Samantha Bosale to the open seat on the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Okay, great. All in favor, Kate?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Great, and thank you, Stan. I'm so sorry I had that outdated agenda in front of me. Now we can approve bills, payroll warrants. Is there a motion to do that?
Make a motion, we approve the bills and the payroll warrants, W-24-25 and W-24-25A.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Kate?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
And I'm also yes. All right, and then we have some minutes to approve. Jenny, are you able to just share those?
Yeah. So I'll share first. They all have changes. The first set I will share is April 25, 2024. Where are the changes? I think this one was there. Oh, no, there. Do you want to vote on each one, or do you want me to move on to the next one and do one vote for all three?
Sorry, can we just go up to the top one, the very top?
The very top or just here?
Yeah, the very, the very top.
Well, I should abstain from this one.
Yeah, and since Stan wasn't present, the only person who can really vote on them is me.
Well, we could do the same voodoo that we did at a recent meeting, where you have a quorum present, so you can vote. And the vote would be
Yeah.
1, 2, 0, and 1 abstain or 2 abstain.
Yeah.
Which would be a pass.
Given that Stan can't vote on these, I think we should do this set separately, so.
Oh, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion, well, I will make a motion to approve, gosh, I keep yeah, a motion to approve the minutes of the April 25, 2024 meeting. And then actually, how do I guess?
Stan can second and abstain.
I'll second and abstain.
Okay. So roll call. Kate?
Stay.
Stan?
Stan.
And I'm a yes.
So whatever's in there, Brian, it's all on you.
All right, moving on. The next set is June 20. I don't think I did these in order. We'll do May 30. Hang on one sec. May 30, and I'll share. Oops. Yeah.
Okay. All right, is there a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the open session minutes of June 20.
These are May 30.
Oh, sorry, May 30. Excuse me.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Kate?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well.
Now we'll move on to June 20. Let me know if I'm going too quickly.
No, this is good. Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of June 20, open session.
Second.
Okay, roll call. Kate?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Jenny, anything else in terms of minutes?
Nope, that is it.
Okay, can you just quickly remind us, is there anything waiting already tonight at Town Hall for us? It'll be later.
There's a ton of stuff waiting to be signed, and I have three items that I'm going to prepare before I go home tonight, so everything should be there before I leave.
Okay. All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call. Kate?
Yes.
Stan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. And the time for the record is?
The time for the record is 7:51. You're trying to steal my thunder, Brian.
Thank you so much, Jenny, for your help today, and good to see everybody else.
Yes, thank you.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Stay cool, everybody. Good night.